All right, good evening and welcome to the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning Board of Appeals. If you don't please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Christine. Art.
Here.
Tony.
Here.
Yeah.
All right, we're missing a board member tonight, so our alternate will be a voting member. For any of you unfamiliar with the proceeding before the zoning Board of Appeals, oh, and it's March 10th, 2025. Any of you unfamiliar with the proceedings before the zoning Board of Appeals, there is an agenda up here on the corner and also on the website. Each item will be taken in the order that it appears on the agenda. The applicant will come forward, will be sworn in and describe their application. Each board member may have a question or more for the applicant. The audience is able to comment on any of the applications. When the record is closed, we'll move on to the next applicant. At the end, we may take a short break and then there'll be deliberations. At that time, no further evidence is taken and we will vote on each of the applications. You can remain for the end of the meeting or you can call or contact the zoning administrator in the morning to find out. Okay, with that, item number one, Faster College, 189 Manchester Road. There's a request to adjourn that to the September 8th, 2025 meeting and I move that we do that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor who see divided by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next is 8 Lindbergh Place. I think the applicant needs to provide some additional information and make a new request, so I'm going to move that we adjourn that one to the September 8th meeting.
September 8th.
I'm sorry?
April 14th.
Ap-
Yeah, you don't want to adjourn it to September, that would be bad.
Uh, yeah, probably not.
Yeah.
April, what is it?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, okay.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Any other corrections, alternates? All right, all those in favor who see divided by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to number three, ABD Stratford, Kensington Lane, Lot 56. Is there someone here for that application?
Um, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, this application is adjourned, is going to be adjourned.
Right, we have one person in the audience who wanted to speak to it, so I think they're going to have their chance to provide their comments and then we can adjourn it.
Okay.
Yeah, come on forward. That's fine.
Yes. You have to sit down too and speak into the microphones.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address us tonight. I understand this will be adjourned to the April 14th meeting, which is quite convenient seeing as how I'm the only one who-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, my name is Kevin Buckland and I live at 24 Hart Drive.
Mr. Buckley, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes ma'am, I do. I would like to address the board tonight as the Lot 56 subdivision application. I understand it will be adjourned to April 14th, which is highly convenient because I'm going to be out of town because that is school spring break on April 14th. The applicant is fully aware of that and probably counts on it that I, there wouldn't be anyone to speak against at tonight. So I prepared a written statement, if you will bear with me, thank you for the time. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to address this board tonight. My name is Kevin Buckland and I own and reside at 24 Hart Drive with my wife and two daughters. My property borders Lot 56 and will share the rear borders of all three of the proposed lots ABD Stratford has submitted for subdivision and zoning variances. No one is affected by this decision more than my family and our enjoyment investment in our home and property. The subdivision of Lot 56 is nothing more than greed. The applicant is asking to construct three homes different in size and different in design, all requiring a lengthy lift of zoning variances. It's simply a money grab. ABD Stratford is attempting to squeeze every dollar out of this phase by exploiting currently inflated home prices at the expense of myself and the other homeowners bordering this lot. ADB's alteration of the original Lot 56 drainage plan as referenced in the legal communication accompanying the October 2024 subdivision application to the planning board stated that ABD bore, quote, "considerable expense" to change the plan. That expense was caused by ABD Stratford's own lack of due diligence. They did not attempt to work with the owners of 18 and 24 Hart on the shared drainage easement issue and no one really knows for sure if Central Hudson granted ABD permission to cross the gas line right of way on my property to access the drainage in between 18 and 24 Hart. The detention pond was actually excavated, built, filled with water as it flooded my property and Hart Drive numerous times because of the pipe that was plugged and pointed out my property. It has since been filled in. I don't even see how a foundation could safely be built on excavated and refilled dirt. ABD Stratford and the Stratford Farm project have negatively impacted the livability and physical conditions of my property. Starting April 11th of 2018, my family has been subjected to near constant construction nuisances. Land clearing noise, heavy equipment noise, house building noise, wind blown garbage debris, dust clouds, water intrusion, everything associated with a project of this scope. My property has suffered permanent problems as well. My backyard is almost constantly wet, a standing water creates ponding with moderate rainfall and snowmelt. The ridge that shielded my property from wind was excavated down contributing to the loss of entire runs of stockade fencing from the increased wind exposure. My pool liner floats regularly from the inundation of groundwater running into my property. Thirty-year-old trees are falling and dying from the near constant ground saturation. The cost of remediating these issues is high and falls solely to me, but it was solely created by ABD Stratford. Of course, I'm told I can't prove these conditions didn't exist prior to construction. But when you drain a wetland and cut down all of the trees, where does that water go? Downhill into my property. The failures surrounding the properties do not lie just with Stratford. Unfortunately, the town bears the responsibility as well. First, not properly recording the drainage easement between 18 and 24 Hart, causing the original detention pond issue, which leads to the current Lot 56 subdivision. Second, failure to include a sunset on the original development plan for Stratford Farm, thus leading to the exploitation of zoning regulations dating back approximately 30 years being used for current construction. Finally, the failure to uphold landscaping barrier installations between the completed Kensington Homes and the Hart May Apple Homes before issuing COs to the Kensington Homes as required by the building plan and as promised by former supervisor Basely. Those are only the failures that I'm aware of. The construction of three homes on Lot 56 will decimate the already reduced privacy and sanctity of my home, deck, pool, and yard. Due to the lot's topography and elevation, privacy fencing, live screening on my property would be costly, if not impossible, an ineffective venture. Installation of visual screening on the proposed lots cannot be counted on as it has not yet been enforced by the town as per the Stratford site plan. Granting the variances that I've requested, have been requested, would place these homes quite close to the shared property line, requiring further removal of the existing live growth that screens my property. Drainage concerns also arise due to the slope of Lot 56 and the proposed lots. Lot 56 slopes almost entirely into my property and away from Kensington Drive, adding volume and strain to the drainage system that is considered private between 18 and 24 Hart and is not built to handle the increased runoff. The town makes no claim to this drainage and does no maintenance to it. Essentially, ABD Stratford will be utilizing privately owned drainage at the current property owner's expense to maintain and repair. Stratford Farm construction has affected my family and Orchard Meadows for seven out of the 10 years I have owned my home. Further construction of Lot 56 will essentially ruin the remaining enjoyment of my home and property for the immediate and long-term future. It will put my yard, my deck, my pool on full display for these new properties, like a stage in an amphitheater. I welcome the board members and I invite you to view Lot 56 from my property so that you can experience firsthand the conditions of which I'm describing tonight. Mr. Dan Garen, ABD's owner, has stated that he wants to be a good neighbor to Orchard Meadows, but he doesn't live here. He doesn't plan to, he is not our neighbor. Mr. Garen is part of a business whose goal is not neighborly relations, but to make profit. He pays his law firm to throw out legal terms such as, quote, "vested rights" at this board to attempt to bully the board into giving him the profits by exploiting loopholes and it, and, I'm sorry, and asserting his perceived rights. What Dan doesn't care about is that his perceived rights destroy my family's rights to enjoy our property. Does Dan's right to profit overrule my right to live peacefully and privately on my property? Dan Garen has made a significant amount of profit at the expense of ruining my property. He does not need to make any more. In closing, I implore this board to protect the interests of the residents of the Town of Poughkeepsie over the profits of corporations. Please do not approve the further subdivision or any variances for Lot 56 now or in the future. Let's remember, ABD Stratford still has townhouses to build and sell. Thank you for your time this evening.
Will you be kind enough to submit that to the record? Thank you. Anyone else who wants to comment on this application? If there's no one in the audience and I don't see anyone on Zoom, so I will move to adjourn this to the April 14th.
Just a question if I may.
Oh, yeah.
You indicated that there was a wetland that was filled in at some point.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you come back up so you can-
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What was the location of that wetland in relationship to where you are in Lot 56?
So if you are on Kensington Drive at Lot 56, the wetland was in between Lot 56 going up Kensington towards where it loops back into, I believe it's Stratford Drive. It was in between that section. It feeds, that wetland feeds an underground river that runs between my next door neighbor and his next door neighbor's property. It's been the constant source of road deterioration on Hart Drive and recently they had to install new drainage catch basins because it was creating such ice damming on the road and deteriorating the road prematurely. All that water has is not being retained by the land anymore. And it is flowing through my neighbor's basements who have B dry systems. They've noticed an increase in their, their flow. And this winter, the road was constantly wet. And as I stated in my letter, my pool will float, the liner will float, if you're familiar with what a floating liner is, from the groundwater in the slightest of rainstorms. Now, the previous owners who have had the house since 1990 only have their liner float once when a hurricane, remnants of a hurricane came through. And mine happens multiple times from spring through summer depending on our rains situation. Last summer, it didn't happen that much because we had a drought, but the damage is permanent. Once a liner floats, it's wrinkled, it wears quicker and the only remediation is to drain the pool and smooth it out. So as I said, I can't prove this beyond a shadow of a doubt, but it's awfully coincidental and enough coincidences have been happening with groundwater in my property that one plus one equals two. So I, I don't know if there's studies that can be done, I don't know, I, but it is awfully coincidental. I have a huge line of white pines that are dying and falling because of ground saturation. I can barely mow entire sections of my backyard without creating a huge muddy mess with my lawn tractor because the ground never dries. And that wasn't the case before they cleared all of it.
Okay, related question.
About when did they clear it or fill it in? It has been, the tree clearing, like I said, began April 11th, 2018. I recall that because it was my father's last birthday. And I would say my groundwater issues and the wetness started 2020-ish over pandemic.
Okay. About, about five years, four, five years?
I've been dealing with it for four going on five years, sir.
All right, thank you.
If I could just ask the, the house numbers
Yes, ma'am.
of your neighbors where the river is running in between underground? What are the house numbers?
I do believe it's 26 Hart and 28 Hart. There was a new catch basin installed there recently before the road was repaved last year. Probably 18 months before the road was repaved.
And is this river on a survey map? How, how are we-
I do not know. When ABD Stratford first started this phase, a lot of the original owners met here with former supervisor Basely and ABD and a lot of this information obviously has been relayed and sat on. That's how I found out about the easement issue between my property and my neighbor's property and it's not properly recorded and the town wants nothing to do with it. So I don't know if there's a record of an underground river, but in the 10 winters that I've spent there, there have been ice problems from the runoff onto that road. So there's obviously a source of water that is feeding from the direction of Stratford running through our properties because we're all downhill.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll move to adjourn this to the April 14th meeting.
I do have a question, sorry. Christine was also mentioning it. Would it be possible that we could set this up for another visit with some better idea of what we're really, what we're really looking at on this?
Me with the, with the builder?
Site visit, no, us as a, as a board. I would like, I would like to get more clarification on what's going on out there.
Okay, so you want to do another site visit?
I would like to.
Yeah.
It's maybe one of the residents or more than one resident around to show us what's going on.
Usually they are the daytime or after hours or?
I'm a teacher, so I'm there at three o'clock. So as far as the lot subdivision goes, it is my entire property border that encompasses these three proposed lots. No one else really has the effect because of how my property line is angled. These three lots will overlook my entire property, front to back. And my, my, my neighbors could offer input as to the water saturation. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not particularly social with my neighbors in my neighborhood. So I would love for you to be able to see. And obviously, if you notified me of a time and date, I would make myself absolutely as available as I could so that you can access my property to see from the, the other side of it rather than just Kensington Lane.
What number Hart are you?
I'm 24.
All right, if you want to leave a phone number with Sonia-
It is on the bottom of my statement.
It is on there, okay.
Yes.
All right, then thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor who see divided by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number four. 7 Andrea Drive. Did you state your name?
My name is Joseph Monti, I live on 7 Andrea Drive.
Mr. Monti, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
I'm, I'm trying to build a garage on my back, my back of my property and I need an extra height of three foot, three foot six inch, that's allowed, not allowed as of now.
Was this advertised for a three foot variance or three and a half foot variance?
It was advertised for three feet.
Okay. So I, as you mentioned in the plans indicated, it's 16 feet six inches. So is that, is that a problem?
I could be wrong, it could, it was three feet, I thought it was three foot six. Maybe it's, maybe it's only three foot then.
Right, so Lisa, is that a problem?
Well, if it, if the elevation is actually 16 foot six, then it should be, the extra six inches should be accounted for.
Right, but the fact that it was only advertised for a three foot variance, is that?
We technically should adjourn and re-notice.
Okay, well, before we do that, I do have a couple of questions. On the application, in the, in the plans, you talk about the, the new driveway, the extension of the driveway?
Yes.
What's, what is that going to be? What material is that going to be?
I'm not sure of the proper terminology, but it's going to be something where water can penetrate through it. It wouldn't be your, your basic type of asphalt.
Okay. And it's on a considerable slope back there. First of all, there's a, as you enter into the backyard, there's a retaining wall?
Yes.
So how exactly is this supposed to happen?
The proposed garage is going to be built basically identical to how my house is built. So I think you've all been to my house. The garage is on a level, level front, top of my driveway. My garage will be at that same height. So my garage will be recessed into the slope. So the front of my garage, where the garage doors are, will be at the same level as my existing garage. The back of my new garage would be considerably low.
Okay.
Like if, if, if the picture shows the, like the, the, the top, it looks like a big garage, but the, the peak of the proposed garage is only going to be as tall as maybe a, maybe a foot, and I'm guessing at that a foot higher than the gutters that are on my existing house. We're not really going much higher than the beginning of the roof line of the existing house.
And tell me this, are you familiar with any other four bay garages in your area, in your neighborhood?
No, that, in a residential?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I know there is one on Andrea that I think probably holds more cars, but he, I think he has two, two garages, but it's much longer, deeper.
And on the diagram, there's a lift, is that just for storage?
Yeah, for, for storage and for, for maintenance.
Okay.
As of right now, I have, I have nine cars registered insured that are on the road that I keep in different areas, you know, garages and I think it's time to try to consolidate them. This is my retirement home right here when I retire.
And there's a concern that, that you don't do any automotive maintenance out on the, on the permeable pervious, on the pervious driveway?
I, I don't do anything now in my house and I wouldn't do anything later in the driveways.
And do you have the diagram in front of you?
Yes, sir.
In the, in the middle section of the garage next to the lift?
Yes.
What, what does that diagram illustrate?
Couches, maybe a table, a chair. It's going to be, it's going to be a place where, when I retire, where I'm going to be tinkering, hanging out.
So it's more of a showroom?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, those are the questions I have. Christine?
So the fence is, is going to stay where it is and this is going to be in back of the fence?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all, thank you.
The, the new driveway you're going to put in, that slope is on a downward slope to your neighbor's yard, correct, right now?
It's pretty flat, but on the other side of my fence, it starts to slope down. But the fence line on my property, going into my property is pretty much flat. I mean, the, the grade could be off a little bit, but it's pretty flat. If I have to, we will, we will make a retaining wall to get it flat.
You know, my concern, even though it's a permeable asphalt, I don't know how fast the water actually drains off it and I would be concerned that you'd be flooding your neighbor's yard if we have any heavy rainfall, you know what I mean? It's going to want to propagate down to his property. How would you stop that?
Oh, well, right now we have, I have drainage pipes that goes all around my house for my gutters. If we do a retaining wall to make it perfectly flat, we could do drainage right into a pipe and go right into the drainage pipes. They're already existing, so it'll be easy to tap into.
That's all right now, thank you.
So you need 3 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
That's why we're all... There was no way to bring this building, I mean, down?
There's always a way, but the way I would like to do it is so I could have the proper lifts, is you want somewhere between 12' and 3" would be, you could squeeze it in, up to 13 feet. And I'm asking for 13 feet so I could have a couple inches of leeway, depending on what model lifts I get, depending on what I put on the lifts. I have, you know, I have a duly pickup truck now, and if that has a cap on it, you need something pretty tall to be able to lift high enough where I could work on it safely and properly rather than ducking underneath it. Okay, thank you.
You came to us before the building department? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have some concerns about how some other, there may be some other impact in terms of total coverage and the pervious or impervious coverage. Is there a reason that you put it all together to the building department first?
I think this, I mean, like I said, this is my retirement dream, and this is me what I could afford for my retirement. And I kind of wanted to make sure I have the lifts and the heights that I want. So if I don't go past this, I'd really have to reconsider how I want to build something. And so this is like my first, you know, check. And I guess this would be considered the cheapest. And then step two would be getting approval for the building, I guess.
So I think the process would be that you submit the whole plans to the building department, and they would identify any other issues that may arise, which is my concern that when, assuming we granted the variance, and then you put it all together for the building department, and they identified additional problems.
I hope they don't, but yes.
Well, I have a concern about the pervious nature of the additional driveway and overall coverage. So I'd like to not do this in a piecemeal fashion. So tell me, is that a real burden for you to put it all together and go to the building department first?
I guess it would just be financially, I guess, right? That's the only reason I'm doing it this way. So you want me to get approval with the board?
I'd like to see what the entire project is, submitted to the building department, and they would identify if there are any other variances that you need. Quite clearly, you need the one for height, but I'm concerned that there may be some other variances based upon what you're proposing, which could be remedied either there or if you need a variance here. But I don't like to do it in a piecemeal. I don't want you to see it coming back each time for an additional variance. I think that might be more expensive for you.
So for zoning, so I'd have to come back if something for zoning, though? Like meaning the building?
If they identified some other problems, specifically the overall coverage and the impervious coverage are two things that I see right now. But there may be some other problems.
Okay.
So I'm asking, is that?
I'd have to, I understand your question. I just don't know the answer.
Okay.
I guess I have to, so I'd have to go. I would like to do a bathroom. So I'd have to get an engineer and someone to do for a septic. So I'd have to pay for that first, too, before I'd ever come back here again. And that would be like $15,000, I think, to get those testing done. So that's why I'm like, you know, to build my dream, quote-unquote, dream garage, the first thing is, let's just get the height, you know? And if that, then I can, okay, I can definitely put my lifts in so I'm not bending down and on the floor. So the next step would be, let me pay the $15,000 and try to get, you know, get the engineer involved to get a septic. And then, okay, we have a septic now. All right, now go to the building, say we have the height, we have the septic, here's our plans, everything is good, you know, and as we know, can we build this? That was what I was thinking financially.
Okay.
To do it.
All right.
This is strictly personal use, right?
100%. 100%.
And then I kind of just have a question for you. So what we're talking about is this building is 16 feet high.
16'6", but...
But it's not higher than the existing house, though, right?
So it is, technically.
But it's not higher than the peak?
It's measured in a different manner.
So the...
I just want to try and understand.
Yeah, what I read is the way I come up, the way I come up with the height that I'm allowed to do is I have to measure the front entrance of the house. So the front entrance of my house, unfortunately, is the highest part of my property. So you measure from the bottom of your door up to the median of your ridge and your soffit. So if my roofline is, let's say, is 10 feet, I measure 5 feet down, that's the median. And then I measure from that mark down to the base of my door. And that's the height I'm allowed to build my garage. But now, when you go to the side of my house, the side is an extra 6 feet deeper, you know, and I'm also building, that's where I want to build my new garage. So if you look at the picture, my new garage is only going to be, and I'm guessing at this, but a foot or two above where the gutter is on my existing house. We're not, it looks big, but it's really only just up to the beginning of the roofline of my house.
Okay, yeah, that was my question.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, just to clarify, you mentioned earlier that the entrance area for your garage would be approximately the same height as your driveway, I believe, more or less?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then you also mentioned about setting this into the slope. So would you have some kind of a retaining wall or would the building itself be built that way into the slope?
The building would be built into the slope.
Okay, so that would be covered by what? The foundation of the building?
The foundation.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
All right. Anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone. Anyone on Zoom? I'm not seeing anyone. So again, this has to be re-advertised, so I'm going to move that we adjourn it to next month? Is that enough time?
That's fine. To get the proper height, you're asking about the 16? Okay, so should I have to resubmit and then?
No, I'll just change it.
Just show up to the next meeting, next month's meeting?
Yep.
Okay. And anything else I would need to bring or want? Anybody?
I'd like to know, I'd like to have the information on the pervious area.
Okay.
Material for the driveway?
Sure, I'll get that.
Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number five, 45 Briar Cliff Avenue.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, why don't you state your name?
My name is Ray Sotomayor.
Mr. Sotomayor, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right. Why don't you describe your application?
What I'm looking to do is basically build a small structure over my hot tub. I'm calling it a shed. I mean, you can call it whatever you really like, but it's a small structure to be protect and just be able to use the hot tub during the winter.
All right. How long's the hot tub been there?
I believe just about three years.
And how big will the structure be?
13 1/2 feet by 13 1/2 feet.
And how tall?
About 8 foot tall.
And what will it be made out of?
Wood to by force, plywood.
Okay. Any electricity or anything to it?
Yes, I would like to put a light in it and three outlets.
And tell me this, why was the hot tub positioned there?
It's the easiest access from the side of my house here. It's just really close.
Is there a reason that you can't use some other natural vegetation as a screening rather than a structure?
Well, we're looking to use the structure during the winter, so, you know, we could have towels, you know, a robe in there. It's going to hold heat from the hot tub, so it's kind of the purpose. It's not really hiding.
Okay, all right. So it's more of an enclosure?
Yes.
Then I have some questions about on the driveway side of your house. There's a structure there that there are a car or more in there?
Yes.
How long has that been there?
A year, almost a year.
Did you get a permit or anything for that?
Yes, I did.
From, you submitted for a building permit?
Yes.
And all the fill that was added?
Yes.
Did you do that?
Yes.
And do you know how far that is from your property line?
The fill?
The building?
The building, it's got to be more than 10 feet.
And how big is that structure?
It's 20 by 20 by, I think it's 9 foot tall.
And the base of the fill, the base of the fill, does that come right down to the edge of your property line or is that farther?
It's farther.
Does your property line go right to the roadway?
Yes.
All right. Those are the questions I have at this time. Christine?
Do you have a picture or a drawing of the shed that you would like to to build around the hot tub?
I believe I submitted a blueprint.
No, I don't see it.
Not with the zoning application, but there is a drawing with the building permit application. I just want to see it.
Did you find a permit for the garage?
Yeah, it's a carport.
It's not a carport, it's fully enclosed. It's got three walls and a roof, and it's more than 9 feet tall.
There's a permit for a 20 by 20 carport.
Carport has no walls, correct?
No, a carport. Well, depending on what they called it, I guess. I'm pretty sure this is the structure that you're talking about.
And the hot tub? You have all the permits for the hot tub?
Yeah.
And how far is the hot tub from your side lot line?
It's 35 feet or more.
Okay.
That's all I had, that's my question.
I have a question. My turn?
Yeah.
You stated that the height of this structure is going to be 8 feet. The walls alone are 9 feet. And that doesn't take you in the peak. So I've got a problem with that.
We're only going to make the walls 8 foot high.
But the peak is going to be another 2 feet?
It'll, yes, it'll, yeah. It'll be a little...
So it's going to be at least 10 feet tall?
Yes, approximately, yes.
And then somewhere in here, you stated that, or I think you stated that you have screening from the, looking from the back of your house where the tub is, looking up. I didn't see any screening to shield that tub from your neighbor's view.
There are some trees and some vegetation that grows there.
Does it grow 8 feet tall, 10 feet tall?
It will if I don't trim it down, yes.
That's over there.
Billis?
I have no questions.
Tony J?
No questions.
No questions?
Tony, yes.
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone. Anyone on Zoom? I don't see anyone there. So I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And again, you can wait till the end of the meeting or find out in the morning.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, next is 86 Vassar Road. Did you state your name?
Jonathan Pagan.
Mr. Pagan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, why don't you describe the application?
We performed a legalization on the house, and there were some additions done from 1962 to 67, I believe. And they never got the permits closed out. So I'm dealing with Dave, the building inspector. He's a great guy. And he's like, hey, listen, we got to get this variance so we can continue moving on the project. We had to update the wiring. The wiring was bad, plumbing. So we're here now. The structure has been there for, I don't even know how many years, 30, 50 years. But I guess they never closed out the permit and got a CO on the addition. So I'm here now, trying to fix this.
On your application, you indicate that you live at 86 Vassar Road?
No, it's my house. I don't live there. I live at 30 Eastern Parkway in the town of Poughkeepsie. Born and raised here.
Okay, yeah, okay. 36 Eastern, okay.
I'm going to live there, but not yet.
All right. Alright, do you have a survey of the property?
Uh, we attached one, I believe. And that's the original one from when they filed the, the permits in the sixties?
Yeah, this is uh, an original survey from
Oh, okay.
It's an odd lot.
Is the driveway shared?
Yep, shared.
Is it? I mean, shared, is it because it's on both property lines?
I honestly, well, yeah, it's, it's actually on more my property line, but yeah, it's, it's on both property lines.
Um, I, I would be more comfortable with an up-to-date survey that shows actually everything that's been done and where everything is before we rule on any of the variances that you're looking to get. Is that possible?
Yes, that's, that's not an issue at all.
Alright, do I have any other questions? Christine?
No questions.
No, so the property, looking at your house on Vassar Road, all that property to the right, that's all bulldozed down and gravel, that's not yours?
No.
That's all your neighbors?
That's all the neighbors. I wish. Is there a reason, though, that we need that, the extra survey?
I, I wanna be sure about where everything is now, for, for whatever variances that we're granting. So I wanna be able to see exactly where, where everything shows up.
Got it.
Have you had the structure looked at for um, safety concerns?
I'm a local general contractor in the area, licensed. Um, so yeah, I'm dealing with an engineer on the job. Safety's there.
Okay, and so like where the, where the foundation is crumbling, that will all be addressed?
So that, that's just gonna be a screened-in porch area, it's gonna be non-livable space. My engineer won't sign off on that because it's just not livable space at all. So it's just um, it's just failure in the, uh, the block, but yes, that's gonna get addressed.
I have no further questions.
Okay, no questions.
That, um, so is that the addition in the back or the front? I can't remember which one.
She's talking about the back.
That's the back, correct?
Back right corner, I assume.
So that's just gonna be a screened porch, you're gonna gut whatever's inside?
It's, yeah, it's already gutted.
Okay.
Yeah, it's already all gutted. There's not gonna be no heat in there.
Yeah, it was hard to see.
I, I left the, the back door open because I guess they said that you guys are gonna be going over there, so the back door was open, you guys are more than welcome to go in.
Okay, so just the front is gonna be done? Just the front?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just to clarify something, uh, my understanding that the addition on the rear was gonna be uh, demolished, I think, was somewhere in the paperwork. Are you saying that that stays now, um, but it's, but it's not heated? And what's the there's, there's like a dashed line around here that says eighteen feet by twenty-four feet, is that that's what the proposed patio or how, what is that about?
Um, dashed line, I don't know exactly what you're seeing on the submission.
You could give them a Okay, just kinda Okay, it's this one here. Okay.
That's just what you're reading to his original paperwork from when the original building permit was filed in the sixties.
So this is, this is already there.
That's already there, so this
Yeah, he's, he's going, he's trying to legalize that.
So, okay, so this, that, this okay, I got it, and this X thing is, is gonna be
That's no longer there.
Okay, that's been taken out?
Yeah, cause this, that, that addition covers all that.
Okay, alright, that's it, yeah. That's it for me.
Is a month enough time for you to get a survey, or do you need more time?
Um, no, I'll get it done in a month.
Okay. Uh, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I haven't seen anyone. Anyone on Zoom? Then I'll move to adjourn this to the April fourteenth. Any discussion? All those who favor signature by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you, see you guys next month.
Thank you.
That brings us to item seven. Uh, for Autumn Drive.
He's on Zoom.
Mr. Benepal?
Yes, hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, uh, my father and I are here, um, thank you for having us.
Okay, just state your names.
Uh, Ashit Benepal.
Mr. Benepal, do you swear or affirm? Excuse me? Do you both swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Alright, why don't you describe the application?
Uh, so we were looking to fence in our yard on Vassar Roadside and obviously the back of the house as well, um, for uh, for various reasons. Uh, one of them being privacy, uh, where our basement is pretty much, I mean, our backyard is pretty much open for anybody to to see what's going on in the back. Uh, and uh, we have a lot of animals coming through, um, deer, coyotes. Uh, I have a dog that's actually, uh, he's a pit bull and he's pretty wild when he sees another animal in the yard. And uh, last summer, we had an instance where a coyote dragged a dead animal, like basically a half a deer through our yard, and we let our dog out in the morning, and he picked it up and started playing around with it, and we were like, this is not normal, what's going on with him? Went and checked, it was basically like to, the, the back end of a deer. Um, and then we have cameras in the backyard, so we looked, and a coyote ran through and dragged the animal right from Vassar Road. Um, then uh, uh, privacy noise from uh, uh, Vassar Road, there's a lot of traffic on Vassar Road, so hopefully that eliminates a little bit of noise. Uh, my parents like to plant their own vegetables, and deer come in and ate them all last, last summer and the summer before. So they're not happy about that. And uh, all the flowers are gone pretty much, I think within a month, they were all gone, so um, those are pretty much some of the reasons that we, we wanted to fence in our yard and uh, and, and have our own space in the back.
And on the northwest side of your property, there's a six-foot fence between you and your neighbor, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, we got a permit for that last year. And that was put in last year as well.
And so you wanna connect the back of that to surround your house?
Yes.
Okay, but it's gonna be open in the front, right, on the, along?
Yes, it's gonna be open in the front. We're gonna stop probably about six feet from where the fire hydrant is. Uh, which is on Vassar Road and Autumn Drive Corner.
Okay. So um, your property is elevated somewhat from Vassar Road, right?
Uh, yes, I don't know exactly how much, I would say maybe a couple of feet.
Okay, is there a reason, is there some reason that the three-and-a-half-foot fence that you would be entitled to is insufficient to do what you want?
Uh, one problem with that is our dog, um, he'll jump over that pretty much the first day. Second would be if we're walking around in the yard, uh, which we like to do, my parents like to do that all the time when, you know, weather's nice like today. You can pretty much see who's walking around, uh, so there's really no privacy. Um, so those are a couple of reasons, and then obviously I'm pretty sure animals have no problem jumping that if they're, if they're coming up from Vassar Road.
Okay. Christine?
Um, so the fence would be behind the um, the shrubs and things that are along Vassar Road, correct?
Yes. We're not, we're not cutting anything, uh, um, you know, we're not chopping any trees, any bushes or anything like that.
Okay, and so would you be willing to go a little bit lower with, with your fence instead of a six-foot fence?
Um, so I put up a six-foot fence on the other side of my house between my neighbor and I. And we were hoping to connect it and continue it onwards. Um, I don't know if I can buy a similar fence that's any less uh, in height. I don't think the company that, um, I got the other fence from, I don't know if they sell anything lower than that. Um, and I don't even know if it's gonna look at the end of the day, um, with it being like that.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so in regards to the last statement, how the fence is gonna look, it's gonna be so far removed from the other fence at the left side of your house. I don't think you'd even notice it. You know, for the line of sight, and then if you wanna bring this fence down along Vassar Road, you're gonna stop it before it comes past the front of the house?
Yes, there's a fire hydrant right in my front yard. So we would stop about six feet before that, just to obviously have ample space if there's any emergencies.
In relationship to the house, where is the fire hydrant? How far, how far is that in front of the house?
It's uh, I wanna say from my front of the house, it's probably thirty feet? Thirty-five feet?
And you wanna go out to the fire hydrant, or not?
No, before, before, we're, we're not even going anywhere close to the fire hydrant. We're basically just uh, gonna stop where my other fence is, uh, which is a hundred and ninety-six feet long, um, starting from my backyard, so roughly the same on Vassar Sa- Vassar Roadside, so it would still give us enough privacy, um, but it won't cover any of our front yard.
And I, I think in our multiple request for fence like this, I think they do make a shorter fence, we've found out in all the years we've been doing this. That would match that fence, but you know, the concern I have again, you know, we don't like to see a stockade around the house. So if you put, for example, four-foot fence over there, four-and-a-half-foot fence to, to split the difference with us. The only animal that's gonna jump that deer are gonna jump a six-foot fence, I'll tell you that right now, they'll jump an eight-foot fence with no problem.
Yeah.
So if you're worried about deer, they're, you're not gonna keep them out with a six-foot fence. Um, would you give some consideration to, again, a, a compromise on the height of the fence? If that meant?
If I can, if we can buy it and it, it, if it can fit our current, cause we already continued, we already have a fence that we wanna continue with. Uh, we don't wanna pu- you know, pull that fence out just in case the, the four, four-and-a-half foot or whatever size the, the company makes doesn't fit that six-foot size that we already have up. Um, then
What I'm saying, I think, is you wanna come along the back with the six-foot fence, right, your backyard?
Right, right.
And then when you hit the uh, Vassar Roadside, if you just knock it down from there, that backyard to the edge of the house to a four-and-a-half-foot fence. I don't think it would be that, you know, I mean, we've seen it done before, and a number of people that we've dealt with have made such a compromise so that you get their fence.
Right, that's
I'm just kinda saying that you might wanna think about compromise.
That's, that would be acceptable, but since, like I said, we walk around our yard quite a bit and you can still see, you know, over that fence, um, with somebody driving on the, on the road, not that, uh, you know, privacy is, is a big deal with a six-foot fence. And then all my neighbors, pretty much everybody along Vassar Road has a six-foot fence, I, I've been driving on this road for the last three years since we moved here. I haven't seen anybody with a smaller fence, uh, our neighbors across the street, they have a six-foot uh, fence. Uh, pretty much everybody around our neighborhood, um, has a similar height. Which is for obvious reasons, on a busy road, um, we did want some privacy.
But again, you're gonna be two to three feet above the road line already, so that's gonna give you essentially a seven-foot fence.
Right, but our, our backyard, you know, if we're in the backyard, then that basically counts as a six-foot, um, yard. Uh, but obviously if we're on Vassar Road, it'd be a little bit longer, a little bit higher. But we're, we're basically looking at it from our yard.
Okay, I'm just, okay, okay.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Tony? Um, about how far is the fence gonna be from the property line and how far from the road?
It's pretty much gonna be on the property line, my property line is about thirty, maybe a little bit more than thirty feet from Vassar Road already.
So about thirty feet?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, and then you had stated that you were gonna do electric fence across the front?
Yes, for our dog, so just so he doesn't go in the front, um, you know, front of the house by, where, where you're turning into Autumn Drive.
So if the front's open, you're still gonna have an issue with a, animals and stuff coming in to the yard?
Uh, it'll probably eliminate it because of the traffic, uh, that comes up in Autumn Drive. I hope, you know, we were hoping that the deer would probably just not come through the front, you know, if they're seeing cars, um Yeah, it, we're, we're just, yeah, we don't really know how that, how we're gonna prevent that. But uh, it'll at least eliminate a lot of uh, deer traffic and coyote traffic from Vassar Road area.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks. Linda?
Um, yeah, I, I, I still, I I still think the deer will come through, but you had mentioned your garden. And you could fence around your garden and you wouldn't have deer in it, you know, like people who have vegetable gardens, a lot of times have high fences because you need them to be higher than six feet to keep your deer out.
Right.
So, and um, I, 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 I don't know, I what would you be able to compromise on the height?
Um, I, like I said, basically we have to see what panels are available, I mean, I think five and six feet would probably be okay, between five and six, I don't know if they make anything that high, um. I don't know what the next step down from a six-foot fence is. Um, you know, with, for the company that, that we already have a fence from, so I'll have to ask, uh
How about four feet?
Uh, unfortunately, at four feet, I think I, I'd just rather not spend the money then, um, only because then we still don't have any privacy, if, you know, we're walking around in the yard.
Okay, no questions.
Okay, a couple of things. I did take a look at the surrounding areas on Vassar Road, south of uh, Autumn Drive, and there were a lot of six-foot fences along Vassar Road. Which basically uh, separate Vassar Road from the backyards of all those houses.
Right.
So that's one observation. Uh, the other, the other observation is we got a copy of this plan highlighted. It looks like it was highlighted along the rear property line and on the sideline. And uh, the por- the portion it's highlighted parallel to Vassar Road, looks like it's more or less in line with the front of your house. And uh, you, you know, you, it sounds like you wanna continue that same, that same height further, although that's not what's indicated on the plan. So that's just another observation, you know, whether or not if you continue to further along, which would then be in sort of li- next to your front yard. I think the requirement is to uh, have it no more than three-and-a-half feet if it's, if it's uh, along your front yard. And I, you know, I don't wanna take any position about the, the one along, parallel to Vassar Road, because they say all of your neighbors to the south all have six-foot fences. The only difference with you is you're a little bit on, a little bit on a hill compared to the rest of Vassar Road.
Just an Right, I did Yeah. Sure, sure, absolutely, I'm
So just observations, alright?
So one of the criteria for us to grant a variance is, is to determine whether there are alternatives to what you're asking for. So um, do you wanna explore and investigate to see whether there are some other uh, fence heights that are available to you, that would kinda satisfy something in between three-and-a-half feet and six feet? Do, are you, you willing to do that? Uh, otherwise we can vote tonight, but I, I'm, I'm not so sure it'll be helpful to you.
We can, we can definitely look into that, I just don't know whether a three-and-a-half foot height i- is gonna be, you know
You're, you're entitled to a three-and-a-half foot height, so anything higher than that, you need a variance for, so if you can find a fence, um, that's greater than three-and-a-half feet, but less than six, that you think would satisfy what you wanna do, um, you can come back with that and then we can revisit it.
Okay, and then if there is a chance that, um, nothing similar is available, you know, under six feet, then what's the next step?
Then we would vote, and it either would be granted or not granted.
Okay. So we can, we can definitely look into it, I can, um, uh, the fence that we currently have, we bought it from Home Depot, so basically I would just have to go to Home Depot, I, I didn't see anything on their site that was similar, um
There's no problem with your back, so you can do your back anytime you want, at six feet.
Right, it's, I mean, yeah.
It's just along Vassar Road there, and I'm, and I'm pretty sure that we would only allow it up to where the diagram indicates comes, coming to the front corner of your house. So I, I know you said that you wanted to go about six feet from the hydrant, I don't, I don't think any of us would grant it that far.
No, no, I, I wanted to stop six feet before the fire hydrant from my house, basically I'm not going up to, if, if I'm coming from my yard, my backyard to the front of the house. I wanted to stop six feet, six feet before the fire hydrant, so basically it'd be a, it'd be, it would line up with my house, with my, um, front patio, pretty much.
Okay. Alright, so is a, is a month enough time for, for you?
Uh, I think it should be, but like I said, I was just looking up on Home Depot website, which is where I got the other fence from, and I'm not seeing any sizes for the same company under six feet. The only panels they sell are six feet tall and eight feet wide.
Okay.
Along with the post, obviously.
Do you want more time than a month?
Um, I can, no, I don't think I would need more time, um, I, it's a matter of just looking right now, so I can, I can look, you know, tonight and, and, and see if there's anything available.
Okay.
If, um, if you don't find it at Home Depot, since and I think somebody else pointed this out, since the fence that runs along, that you would want running along Vassar Road isn't really gonna be, you're not really gonna see how it's gonna look when it abuts the rest of the, um, the fencing. You know, if it's slightly different, it may not make that much difference. You know, if it's slightly different, it may not make that much difference, cause you really won't be able to see. Does that, does that make sense?
Definitely, yeah, I totally get what you're saying, yeah.
That's all, thank you.
And you could check other places in addition to Home Depot.
Right.
For fencing.
Yeah, and then wha- whatever you come up with, if you wanna submit those to us, so we can get an idea of how it's gonna look.
Sure. So did you want me to send you anything I find under six feet, um, along with, uh, um, if, you know, if we, we don't find anything under six feet, then I guess I'll just come back to you guys and, and say this is, you know, this is pretty much it. Uh, because the company that I have currently, they only sell through, uh, Home Depot. They're not a, you know, they don't, they don't sell, uh, they don't have like their own website or anything. They're distributors through Home Depot only.
I, I think it's in, in your best interest to find something in between three and a half and six feet.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll certainly look tonight and then get back to you then.
Okay. Alright, then I'll, I'll move, unless anyone has any other questions? No, then I'll move to adjourn it to the April fourteenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor sitting with the V I?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Alright, that brings us to number eight, Seven Springsteen Avenue.
Hello.
Okay, can you state your name?
My name is Cameron Casera.
Mr. Casera, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
And I see that Ms. Ramos is on as well. She's probably gonna wanna comment, so why don't we swear her in at the same time? Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Ramos, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, why don't you describe the application?
So we are looking to, uh, renovate Seven Springsteen Avenue in, uh, the Arlington Town Center District of the town of Poughkeepsie. Currently, the site is a, uh, single family, uh, three-story frame, single family home with detached three-car garage. Um, we are looking for a unit density variance to add three additional apartments to the site. Um, in preliminary meetings with the planning board and under the review of the zoning board, our zoning administrator, we have had one of those units deducted from the total allowable, uh, through the, uh, uh, residential over commercial, uh, zoning clause in the ATC zoning. So we are looking for a deduction, uh, or a variance on the two additional units, um, on, of the addition. So I will pass the mic over to Ms. Ramos, who's kind of gonna give you an overview of what her goal is for this project and why we think, uh, you should allow us to proceed.
Alright, okay, thank you for letting me speak today. I am so excited about this project and I'm excited that we're moving forward with the zoning board meeting. Um, this project started in nineteen ninety-nine, when I came from the city of New York, from the Bronx, um, fleeing from domestic violence, you know, a situation that I had with my daughter of six years of age. Um, and, um, Dutchess County was the, the place where I found, you know, uh, uh, an opportunity to move forward, you know, in surviving that and becoming the person that I am today. That gave me the segue to what I'm doing here. This is a dream of mine that began in nineteen ninety-nine, like I said, when that happened to me as a survivor. This place for me, yes, we have to start in creating revenue and building these apartments, you know, and, and it's gonna start that way. You know, the, the LLC is Women of All Trades for a reason, because I'm a social worker, I'm a clinician. And, uh, as long as, um, this is a, a dream, it's not going anywhere, but when it becomes a goal, it's gonna help a lot of people. First, I'm gonna create housing that is gonna be great for this community that needs housing. You know, we're, we're building these big, um, um, homes, two, which have three bedrooms and one that has two. And also in creating that, I have the office space for me as a clinical social worker in the bottom. And, um, eventually I want to, um, open my, um, uh, nonprofit organization. So we have to create revenue in order to do that, so that there could be a home for the nonprofit organization, which in turn I would like to have, help transition women that are surviving from domestic violence in the long run with, with this nonprofit organization and assisting at least with these three new homes that are creating that's gonna be, you know, what we're asking for with these variances. You know, this is a dream come true and I'm hoping that you give me the opportunity to segue into that and, um, start with this process altogether.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, how many apartments are you looking for?
So on the site, there would be a total of four apartments, including the existing home, so three new apartments. Um, as I mentioned earlier, one of the apartments has already been, um, kind of deducted from the density calculations because it's over commercial space, like Ms. Ramos just referenced. Her office will be in a portion of the existing, uh, ground floor garage space, which will be, uh, re-designated as commercial use. So we're looking for a zoning variance on the two other units we're proposing.
Just for clarity's sake, I believe we, um, advertised a public hearing for three, uh, variants for three units, right? Not the two, yeah, because, uh, I, I believe the zoning administrator determined that, or, uh, that the, that unit did not count as.
Yeah, I don't find it to be exempt. It looks, it's, it kind of straddles two of the units upstairs. It's not really immediately above like the definition states.
So we advertise it for three units, um, if, you know, so you can either grant the full three or, or if you.
Right, it's actually, um, the density is calculated at a total of four units on the property, which includes the existing house plus the three new.
I meant the variance for three, right.
Right, and the board, you know, has within its power, the ability to look at Chrissy's, um, determination and the applicant's assertion that they should get credit for one of those dwelling units. And the board can consider that and make whatever determination it decides.
Do you expect these apartments to be transitory or semi-permanent or occupation, to be occupied?
So in the beginning, um, you know, nonprofit organizations take a while, you know, getting the boards, getting the things done. I don't, I haven't even started with that. So as of now, it's going to be, you know, something that's gonna be long-term. But as a transitional, I, at least a minimum, we'll have to give these ladies, you know, um, these families, like a year, at least a year and a half transitional, you know, housing, so that they can get up on their feet. It's about, you know, being able to provide this housing that's going to help them segue into, you know, having a trade, you know, having something in place that they can stand on their own two feet as mothers and, you know, and, and, and being part of this community.
Okay, Christine?
No questions right now, thank you.
Art? I don't have any questions still, thank you. Phyllis?
And you will live in, you'll live in the home while the renovations are happening?
Well, there, there is, um, I had, I do have a, um, vacancy, I mean, um, residence. Um, there's a certificate of residence there, so, um, as of now, the, the home that's already there is livable, you know, is a living space, but, um, I'm not living there presently. I have a home in, um, Pleasant Valley, New York. But, um, I'm trying to transition when do, when I do have everything in place, um, into living in that home. That's gonna be the place for me to live, you know, with my son, because he does go, he goes to SUNY Neopaltz. And I'm hoping that he's closer, because that's a, a closest place for him to be during his, um, you know, um, junior and senior year of college. He, 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 um, commutes now. It's, um, it's expensive and it's easier. I am a single parent as well, so.
And will these be, um, subsidized housing units?
If I can, I don't mind, I know, I, I'm open to whatever is empowering to my community and to, um, the people we serve. I am a social worker, I will be wel- willing to get subsidized programs in there. I, I have no issue with that if that's the case. You know, the programs, if, they're still gonna be, um, paying the rent, that's, that's gonna be, um, the total of whatever, um, I'll be asking for. The housing, you know, um, programs that are out there, whether it be section eight, whether it be the subsidized programs that are in, in, in place, I am, um, you know, willing to do that. I came from that. I was able to surpass that and, and, and move forward. I, I, I had subsidized housing at one point in my life, so I'm not afraid of, of, of providing that to my community. You know, um, as a social worker, I understand the needs of the community and the community we serve.
I have no further questions. Have you calculated how many apartments you need to make this profitable as a nonprofit?
Well, in transitioning, three apartments, the ones that we're gonna be building, um, it's, it's gonna be a pretty great, you know, um, new segue, because this could be a model of what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to give these women, um, you know, the opportunity to have the, the needed services there under one umbrella, where they can also be helped, um, to, to learn a trade or to do something, um, and, and apply for an education that they may need. Cause I'll be the social worker there standing and then, um, I even have some women on board that, you know, within accounting and law and all these other things that we may need that I'm gonna be, um, you know, gearing for this modality. And I'm trying to be a model to the community. I understand because I came from, um, have, um, you know, um, domestic violence, which used to be, um, Better Women Services at one point, I used to work with them in, um, Twenty-Nine of Hamilton. You know, that's where my, my career started with, um, advocating for domestic violence. And this transitional living space, which Grace Smith used to have as well, it's not the same. They didn't have it under one umbrella where they really assisted people. I'm trying to get this living space to be open to those women, where they're gonna have that services with my office there. And, um, try to, you know, open it even more so, um, in the future. Once, um, we create, you know, some type of monetary, you know, beginning, you know, at the moment with just renting it out for residency before it becomes a nonprofit. I mean, in the long run, what we need is to have some money.
So that's my question, have you, have you calculated the number of apartments you need to make this a viable, um, option?
Well, it's three, it's three, yeah, it's three apartments what we're gonna have on top of the, um, the new apartments are three. And the one that I'm gonna be living with is already done. That's the one that's already there in place right now. So the three apartments that are gonna be, um, built is going to be, um, for, you know, renting out or for the transitional housing. And I think that because one, two of them are three bedroom, you know, that will be the high, highest standard, being a, a grade remodel ba- bedroom, uh, um, I mean, um, apartment, um, you know, um, with, I think that that's gonna be, um, good revenue for, per month that I'm gonna be creating. And, um, the nonprofit organization is gonna be created by me, already have the space. You know, I have no mortgage on this, on this residence. So, you know, this is a place that's already bought, what, 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 we're gonna be investing now with your approval and the cost of, you know, building it will be what we're gonna be, you know, paying into. But as of now, the house is mortgage free, so I, I really.
So my question is, is the project viable with less than three additional apartments?
Oh, no.
I mean, uh, just, just to dive in here from a design point of view, we tried to strike a balance, cause we're, we're looking to graft additional housing units into an existing neighborhood in a, an area of the town of Poughkeepsie where mixed-use, uh, multifamily residential is allowed by special permit. Um, the, the lot is quite small and the number of units we're proposing is really, uh, kind of trying to strike a balance between what we need to provide in terms of onsite parking and, you know, not overloading the existing building mass, because we're not, um, actually enlarging the footprint, we're using the same footprint and just adding units above the existing, uh, three-car garage. Um, so the number of units is really being dictated by, well, in our best judgment, we think, um, the site can accommodate the number of parking spaces that we can fit, obviously with the, uh, the license from the town to use part of the right-of-way. And, uh, what seems appropriate for the neighborhood and multifamily. How, like, there's a new multifamily, uh, housing unit or a building right across the street. There are a couple of them and I do have, um, I'd say less than conventional parking arrangements as well. There's, uh, staffed parking, so we're really, I think our parking arrangement in many ways is very similar and it's not more useful than some of those other parking arrangements. So the, in, in conclusion, the unit count wasn't coming from a financial metric as much as, uh, how much can we provide on this site and, uh, kind of try and meet as many of the requirements as possible with li- as many limited, with limited variance requests.
Okay, and how, where are you with the town about the parking right-of-way agreement?
Um, we are, uh, slated to speak to the planning board at this upcoming meeting. We presented the parking plan to them last November. They asked for a little more detail in terms of the grading of the parking lot itself. Um, but they weren't opposed to the, the actual plan and there was a precedent that they had for this kind of right-of-way license. And the highway superintendent said that the street, because it's a dead end, um, and the right-of-way is quite large, he didn't see any issue with plowing, given where we're, the, the portion of the right-of-way we're planning on occupying. Um, and so far, I think they've indicated that with, if the, uh, the parking area meets kind of their requirements, they wouldn't be opposed to the license.
There is a draft parking agreement, um, in the packet, uh, and it's, it would be a condition of any variance that the license be approved by the town board. That would not be, the project couldn't go forward without the, that piece. That's also something the planning board would, will be requiring.
Okay, and tell me about the, the refuse issue?
Um, the refuses too, I feel like is the, the smallest ask in a way. Um, they're just, the, the front, that yard is not fifty feet to the right-of-way, so there really is no place that is fifty feet away from the building, existing two-story refuse, so, um, you know, we're gonna provide a nice enclosure with wood screening, you know, um, or the refuse cans, more or less in the place that they currently store, you know, except with screening.
Okay, Tony?
No questions.
Lita?
No questions.
Tony?
Okay, I do have a question for you with regard to parking. I was looking at your, uh, site plan sheet number A dash double zero one. And, uh, I'm looking at where you depict P one, P two, three, four, five. And there's a little note there, which I'm a little bit confused about. Uh, and the note that's under your diagram says stacked parking for P one, P three, P one slash P three and P two slash P five would be coordinated by family members in households. Now, what do you mean by stacked parking?
So the stacked parking is, uh, would be the P one spot and the P three spot and the P two spot coupled with the P five spot. So basically, in order to pull your car out of the garage spot, P one, you would have to coordinate with the person. Um, person parking in P three. And so basically, uh, our precedent for this style of parking is that many single-family homes in the neighborhood have a single-width car driveway in which they park multiple vehicles. Um, so therefore, we're kind of saying that, you know, if a family had more than one vehicle and they occupied, or, you know, not necessarily family, but just housemates had more than one vehicle and they occupied the same residential unit, they would be able to coordinate, um, their parking arrangements, much like a family with multiple cars in a single-family home in the same district.
You mean coordinate as to who gets the garage and who's outside, is that what you're, what you mean by that?
Uh, yeah, that as well as just like if someone in the garage had to go to work, they would coordinate with their housemates or family.
We still leave earlier in the morning, right?
Yeah.
Alright, yeah.
No, I, just the term stacked brings, you know, brings o- other, other images to mind, okay? So, uh, okay, alright, I, I understand, thank you.
And, and, um, to the, the reference to stacked is actually mostly referring to the other new parking lots in the neighborhood, right across the street, uh, from Van de Water, there is a new multifamily housing, um, just building that has stacked parking where the cars are stacked in such a way that you can't actually move a car without coordinating with the person behind you.
And that's for two houses, they have the same parking for two houses.
Right, so I think, um, there is precedent kind of for this, this stacked arrangement in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, and that's really all we're talking about.
Okay, so you're not talking stacked as in elevating one car above the other car?
No, no, no. No, no, no.
All right. Got it. Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone from the audience? Any other questions? Anyone from the audience who was just a comment in this application? There's no one in the audience? There is?
Yes, sir. Yes, there is.
Okay. Why don't you state your name?
My name is Natalie DeMarco.
Mr. DeMarco, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
What would you like to say?
I'd like to ask permission to share my screen if possible.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, good evening, members of the board and the town community. I'm here to address the proposed variances for Seven Springside and Vandewater avenues, which if approved will undoubtedly redefine the neighborhood, producing an undesirable change to its character, creating a detriment to nearby properties and an adverse impact to the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. My husband and I are working professionals and taxpayers who have lived in the neighborhood for nearly two decades, and we are very concerned. Vandewater Avenue is a short, dead-end road that is already overburdened by cars that park on both sides of the street. These cars spill over from already existing multi-dwelling houses as well as an automotive business on Springside Avenue. While the front of the proposed dwelling faces Springside Avenue, the applicant's proposal and requested variances directly impacts Vandewater Avenue, which is where we live. Addressing the first variance requesting density as per 21022E2, which states residential density shall not exceed six dwelling units per acre. Please refer to this photo showing a six-unit grid representing the designated dwelling unit density of six units per acre. The applicant's parcel is represented by the striped area. This is measured on her site plan as .15 acres or less than one unit. The applicant's entire proposal of four units rests on only 15% or less than one-sixth of an acre. She is essentially asking the town to grant her a variance which would require five times the land that she currently has, and that is absurd. The question of dwelling density rests on the fact that the entire lot is .15 acres and is presently and rightfully classified as a single-family residence due to parcel size. It is not designated as a multi-dwelling. The applicant is asking the town to grant her four times the allowable occupancy density in her proposal. In her site plan, she cites special approval because the proposal includes an office, which permits the dismissal of the dwelling units she proposes when calculating maximum residential dwelling unit density. However, doesn't the law that she is citing state that it can only be used on a property that already exists as a legally-zoned multifamily? Hers does not, and the site plan tells to meet the applicable coverage and parking requirements in order to use this special approval. The applicant is asking for a variance of over half an acre and is attempting to use the inclusion of an office to offset what is clearly an overburden. The .15-acre existing parcel is simply not big enough and does not meet the aforementioned requirements. Approval of this variance will mean a drastic change for the worst in our small, already overburdened neighborhood. Please vote no to this variance request. Addressing the second variance request regarding parking as per 2109001, please refer to image two. This image was taken today and is an honest and accurate indicator of the current parking situation on Vandewater Avenue. As you can see, we are near maximum capacity daily as there are already multi-dwelling houses on Springside whose tenants and their visitors use these streets for parking. Additionally, there is an automotive business at the bottom of Vandewater on Springside that occupies much of the parking on both sides of the streets during the day. The garages, well, you don't see them, sorry, but there are garages on the left side here. And that is the area of the applicant's proposal for her parking. The applicant's proposal suggests a parking debacle. There is no room for the amount of parking necessary for the proposed dwelling units on her .15-acre parcel. The applicant's solution to this problem is blocking cars in. Please refer to this photo. In her site plan, she suggests staggered parking and blocking in vehicles. In the photo, these spaces are marked as P1 through P7. Notice how P1 and P2 marked with arrows are blocked in by vehicles and P3, P4, and P5. The applicant's proposed solution to this problem is included in the site plan and states that members of each household will figure out the mess that is created here. Isn't it likely that tenants will park on the street to avoid being locked in? Where is the space for these additional cars? And where will visitors to her tenants and to her proposed commercial office park? There simply is not enough room on her .15-acre parcel to accommodate parking for her proposed units. Additionally, the applicant needs a separate agreement from the town to allow cars to be parked in the town's right-of-way with bumpers at the street. Again, her parcel is too small to contain vehicles for the proposed unit. Please look again at photo three. All right, here it is. The bold black line that runs through the middle of parking spaces P through through P7 is the property line. More than half of the vehicles parked in these spaces will sit outside of the property line and potentially in the road. The applicant's parcel is too small to meet the requirements for parking for the proposed units, and she suggests that these cars will park in the town's right-of-way that borders the road. How will this impact snow removal on Vandewater Avenue? There is nothing indicated in the proposal to show an area for snow removal on the parcel as the parking lot is hemmed in by the proposed refuge structure and one of the proposed stairwells. Snow will likely be pushed into the street. Looking again at photo two, you can see that our road has already been reduced to a single lane of traffic and already compromises town and emergency vehicles to service the street and houses on the road. Approving the applicant's proposal will only exacerbate this problem as she is again trying to fit too much into a space that is simply too small. Please vote no to this variance request. Addressing the third variance request regarding a refuse area as per 210112, please refer to this photo which shows two images, the applicant's site plan and an actual image of the area. The white shape represents the approximate location of the proposed refuge structure, four feet, seven inches from the property line and twenty-five feet from our front door. The driveway belongs to us and the house on the left is ours. This variance request is essentially asking for the near elimination of the town code, which protects us from refuse being too close to our residents. This is unacceptable to us, and we hope that it is unacceptable to you. In addition, the site plan includes only three receptacles. For the number of units proposed and the size of said units, this is entirely inadequate. Adding more receptacles means adding more area to the proposed refuge structure. Further, the site plan proposes that the garbage is to be blocked in at the parked vehicles. There is simply not enough space on the applicant's .15-acre parcel to accommodate this request. We ask that the board deny this variance. Addressing the question of a variance for the proposed seven-foot-two-inch wide, twenty-two-foot-four-inch high, and nineteen-foot-eleven-inch-long open stairwell on the north side of the parcel against the same property line as the refuge structure. Please refer to this photo which shows two images, one of the applicant's proposal and one actual photo of the area with a white rectangle marking the approximate area of the proposed open stairwell. Please note that this is the same area that was just examined regarding the requested refuse variance. This proposed permanent structure will be built four feet, two inches from the property line. In addition, the applicant's proposal suggests multiple units, some three bedrooms implying families with children. This proposed open stairwell will encroach on an active driveway. There is no variance requested for this structure, and there is no proposed barrier between the open stairwell and the active driveway. This is a mistake that compromises safety and is deeply concerning and unacceptable to us as taxpayers. In closing, it is important to reiterate that if approved, this proposal will undoubtedly redefine our small neighborhood as overcrowded and bloated. The proposal is incompatible with the existing neighborhood, and the applicant has not rightly considered her parcel's density and capacity. The proposed dwelling is too large for the .15-acre parcel it hopes to occupy and leaves insufficient space for appropriate and adequate safety, parking, and storage of refuse. Evidently, the applicant is proposing to maximize the volume of people and vehicles into a space that is simply not large enough, defying residential dwelling unit density code and the aforementioned zoning laws. Please vote no to these variances in an effort to preserve the integrity of our neighborhood. As resident owners, we ask you to vote as if you too lived here. Thank you for listening.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I have one follow-up. So the office, is it gonna actively see clients?
From Mr. DeMarco. Do you have those as written statements, Mr. DeMarco?
Oh, absolutely. Is there an email address I can send them to?
Did you get that zoning@townofpoughkeepsie.org?
Zoning, I'm sorry, zoning@...
You don't have a microphone in front of you, so maybe...
Yes, I'll send that out.
Okay.
Soon as we get off the meeting.
All right. Does the applicant have any comments regarding, or any response to the neighbor's comments?
Yes, I do. When I first got the place, I had a conversation about my goals and my plans for this place. I presented it to my neighbors before I even started the process. And I told them exactly what it was, and they sounded excited about doing this for the neighborhood. It was something, I even have other neighbors that lived across Seven Springside to verbalize that they were part of this, you know, meeting and this, you know, back and forth that I had with my neighbor. And she was some excited about it because her being a woman as well and her husband working for the state, we had a long conversation about it all the time. And she was on board with it. What happened with it, I don't understand. You know, what occurred from that point to this one?
Actually, I'd just like you to address the comments, the concerns that she has, not whatever you may have worked out with neighbors.
Well, the concerns, the concerns that she has, okay, according to all the concerns, okay, first of all, you know, when it comes to whatever variances she's saying upon what I'm using my home for, I'm using the acres that it is, the variance that is being asked for. We're not asking to, you know, expand anything of, using anything around us that is not part of my house or my acres. You know, whatever we're building on is on top of what we have already that is part of my home and the measurements that my home entails, you know, first of all. Second of all, the office space and the variance that I'm requesting, turning it into a business, this is a dual-zone neighborhood. As we can see across from there, and the parking spaces that are being used are being used by this business that is a car dealership. And the same, you know, thing that the car shop that has these, the car shop has the rights to use the spaces there. Everybody will have the right to use the spaces there. You know, my household is not gonna change anything there. The same way that everybody else has a right to use that space, so what the household that I'm, you know, asking to do and the variances that I'm asking to do. According to the parking space variance, the two parking spaces that are inside that's gonna be locked in are gonna be my parking spaces. I don't have any problem leaving my tenants to use the parking spaces that are gonna be there. The right-of-way that's going to be implemented already used now. We already have a paved area that is being used now just because, you know, the existing tenants and the existing building owner from that house in Seven Springside had already paved that prior to having a right-of-way. That was already being used by that house. We're just doing the right thing now and getting all the variances and using it accordingly to the law. But that was already there in place, and as you can see in the picture that she provided, was the same thing. It's already been used. There's nothing up the street that's going to be used in using the space that is provided there. The place that I'm asking for, for the, for the encompass of the garbage, that's the place, you know, that, you know, she's been using my part, my neighbor has been using my space and my home to put her garbage every time. And I've never said anything about that.
All right, let me stop you just a second. Let me ask you, so the diagram indicates three refuse containers. Is that what you really expect?
Dot, I can dive in here now. The three refuse containers have not been approved or are not really based on any requirement. And we can expand the refuse area if necessary.
Okay.
I'd like to just address some of the other points, issues that were raised, especially the photo that was shown of Vandewater. I feel like it's perhaps a little misleading because half of the cars are parked illegally. Vandewater only has parking on one side. Whether or not people are parking illegally on the other side is a misrepresentation of the use of the site. And I think providing more onsite parking where we're using that side actually clears up the road to be more effectively a two-lane road. Regarding the egress stair that abuts the neighbor's yard, we're in the beginning stages of approval. Safety fences and screening, these are all things that are on the table. We were very sensitive with the selection of lighting to make sure, you can see this in the site lighting plan, that there is very minimal to no trespass of light from any of the fixtures were selected because we're sensitive to the fact that it is a proximity issue. You know, we don't wanna have floodlights that are disrupting the neighborhood. This is like meant to graft more housing into the neighborhood with as little impact as we can. And we're very sensitive to making adjustments to make our adjacencies more comfortable and kind of less affronted by the proposal. So I'd like to open a dialogue and see if we can figure this out.
Okay. Did you have a question?
I had a question. So the office, Mrs. Ramos, will be seeing clients, right? Where would they?
Of course.
Where would they be expected to park?
There's seven parking spaces there, one of them for which is a handicapped parking.
So there's allotted parking in the diagram there, not just for the tenants?
Yep, one allotted parking for the office.
Yeah, we're only required one spot, and there is one allotted.
Okay. Thank you.
And how do you expect the refuse containers to be picked? And how do you expect the refuse's containers to be picked up?
How do we expect them to be rolled to the curb and right in front of the property line?
All right, so one of the tenants will do that?
Yeah, everybody does their own. Yeah, everybody will do their own. This is like, you know, it's like any other, any other place that's supposed to have their own tenants. I mean, the tenants, there's going to be a lease with the necessary duties that everybody has to entail. You know, what's unexpected and everybody should be taking care of what has to be expected.
All right. And Ms. Marco, what happens with snow removal now on Van de Water?
A really great question. So we've been in contact with our town board representative, Ann Berger. She's a fantastic advocate through the years regarding the snow removal because, actually, I just want to make the point that the photo that I showed, and I'm happy to bring it up again so that you can see it, of the parking on Van de Water. I heard Mr. Crusara, I'm not sure if I'm saying your name correctly, but I heard you say that Van de Water is an alternate side of the street parking road. Husband and I have lived here for nearly twenty years and the photo that you saw is exactly how the cars are parked on the road every day, every year. So the idea that Van de Water is an alternate side of the street parking road may exist, but the reality is what you saw in the photograph. So back to your question about snow removal. We have had many conversations with Ms. Berger this winter regarding the inability of the plow to get up Van de Water because of the parking on both sides of the road. She has been in contact with the transportation department and she has also been in contact with the gentleman who owns Bavarian Automotive, which is the automotive business at the bottom of Springs side. And when there is a snow prediction, he has been considerate to move some of the parked vehicles off the road. But like I said, the image that you saw is a true and accurate representation of what Van de Water Road looks like every day. We're near capacity every day.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Which is why it's so great that we're proposing this wonderful proposal to expose that parking area so that that won't happen with any of the vehicles that we're, you know, having. I already have the space there. We're just expanding it so that the vehicles could be off the road and that none of that issue with the snow plows or anything will happen with our proposal.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? All right.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm not sure if you're asking if there's anyone else who would like to speak on the matter?
Yes, I will ask that. Is there anyone else else that wants to speak on the matter?
Yes, there is.
Good evening. My name is Russell DeMarco.
Mr. DeMarco, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Do.
What would you like to say?
I think you have a statement as well. I'd like to take this time to add to our statement by describing my experience living next to this property past eighteen years and after reading through the site plan. Property has existed as an illegal multifamily dwelling for years. Within the last ten years, three families have lived in this house at the same time in the existing separate apartments on each floor of the house. The last and current tenants living in the finished attic studio. I've been inside this house as a guest and have seen these separate apartments. The Duchess County scorecard for the property describes this property as a single family property containing three floors, two kitchens and three full bathrooms. The applicant's own site plan shows these kitchens and bathrooms, describing them as existing and to remain. Three separate apartments are clearly seen in the drawings of the site plan with an addition of a balcony deck and an increase of the square footage of the third floor studio alone to six hundred and twenty-eight square feet. All that money in construction simply to describe that space, bedroom number four. While the applicant's own site plan shows separate apartments, the applicant is instead trying to describe this as a single unit. The applicant is trying to sell the board, the town and the neighborhood in both under the guise of affordable housing, packaging the existing illegal apartments, unchanged doorways and floor plans. Together, the three-floor, four-bedroom, two-kitchen, three-full-bath, single unit. Affordable housing unit also has a six hundred and twenty-eight square foot master bedroom, private full bath and deck. Realistically, any variance of tripling the unit density of the property should be filed to legalize the already physically existing three units in the house and contained in the applicant's site plan, house itself. Second, using the Arlington Town Center Building Code, don't believe it applies to this neighborhood by law. Property size in the building plan does not satisfy the conditions required by the law. Grant the applicant another tripling of maximum density, build three more large units and an office, all including kitchens and full baths. On paper, the plan itself shows seven full baths and six kitchens on point one five acre parcel. Building code of the Arlington Town Center requires any site using this special use law to already be an existing multifamily dwelling. Further, the code requires the site to meet unit density, open space and parking requirements to meet the standards of the zoning code. Also, any proposed construction cannot be outside or expand the existing building. We've shown you the stairwell and the deck encompasses the entire parking area. And no dwelling within the multifamily structure shall contain more than two bedrooms. The site plan is on point one five acre parcel and fails on every requirement to meet the standard of that law. In conclusion, I ask that this board please vote no to propose variances in site plan. Thank you for hearing my concern.
Okay. And again, does the applicant have any response to those comments?
Yes, I don't know where, there's nothing in that, in your plan that we have given that has six kitchens. Don't know where that came from. Again, I, as living in the house that's already existing, can expand my suite the way I like in my third floor. I don't understand why that's an issue. Why is that a concern? That I want my own bathroom in my floor and my place of living where I'm going to sleep? I don't know why that's an issue. I don't understand what the constraint is there. That is an existing one-family home. So I can have a balcony because I don't want to, I like to have my cigarette once on the moon and I don't like to have it inside my home. So this is the reason why I like that idea. Again, this, yes, the proposal of the three extra, you know, kitchens, because each family deserves to have a place to cook. In order for them to make it a possibility for them to survive, this is a need. They have to be able to heat up and make their food. But I don't know what, where these ideologies came. I don't know what the other people that used to live there were like or whatever they did wrong. I'm trying to make it right. I'm asking for these variances and make things legal and things correct. Make this neighborhood better. I don't understand what or why, you know, this is not being approved, you know, why you're against that, making the neighborhood better. But I hope that you see everything that's being proposed here is for the betterment of this community and for everyone that's going to be, you know, taking advantage of having more residents and more living space and more places to be able to give to this community.
One second. I'd just like to address the previously existing three apartments in the single family home. So when we started this process about a year ago, we spoke with the building inspector and basically before Ms. Ramos purchased the building, those apartments were removed, especially the top floor officially. So there's been a lot of, this is not like an attempt to sneak more units into the house. Those units were being removed and they are removed from the plan. In an earlier design, we had a second floor entrance, which we removed because to comply with the building department's request that that whole house was entered through the ground floor, which by definition makes it a single unit. So the three additional units, much to that point, you know, three families used to live in this house illegally. It was not safe. We are trying to basically find new homes, not, you know, for those families, but the people that live there, you know? So this density is not new to the site. We're just trying to make it as safe and legal as we possibly can and so that those people, you know, are not displaced from the community. So that's really the reason that we're requesting these variances, not to like stack density and kind of sneak in dwelling units, but really just trying to create safe, affordable housing options in the town of Poughkeepsie. So the people that used to live in these illegal apartments, which as we all know are just rampant in Poughkeepsie, have a safe, affordable place to live that doesn't adversely affect the neighbors. So like I said before, we are very open to working with our neighbors to make something that is beneficial for the neighborhood and palatable, so.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this application?
Yeah, I just, I'll say one more thing. Just reading the floor plan of the plan that I was given and I'm counting six kitchens and seven bathrooms. I don't know what, you know, on a single unit, there's two kitchens, three full bathrooms in that unit. I understand you want to make that however you want to make it, but it looks to me as if continuation of multiple units. I don't know your plan. When we spoke before, Ms. Ramos, you did not, you told me that you are not planning on living here. So I'm assuming that this is all for rental. And what I see, I've seen in the house and I see on the floor plan is still two existing floors in that house that are their own separate apartments plus a studio apartment that is now being lived in currently. So I see three different available units in the house alone plus the additional units on the side. So that is why I commented on that. As I said, it's right from your proposal. Kitchens remaining and or existing and to remain, that is in your proposal. It just seems like a very large unit for a single family. The parking is the same way. Have more than one car or household, we got a problem. Not enough parking there. That's it. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who was to comment on this application?
For the record, I don't know what, again, he hasn't been in my house for a very long time. I've moved there over, you know, two years now. So I think he's just picking whatever is in the floor plan. It's the existing things that were there from the first and second floor, but there's no studio apartment there. There's nothing in the attic, which is an attic. So again, these are hearsay. Please look at the plans for yourself and look at what we're proposing and what we want to do with it. You know, everybody has a freedom of doing what they need to do for their own homes, how they prefer, how would they like it? I don't understand why there's an issue with that. But the key of this is the three, the variances that we're asking for for us to build these houses for these residents that we want to, you know, give to the community too. The existing residence is already there for me. That's where I'm going to live.
Okay, I think we understand that. Thank you. So for the record, the county finds this a matter of local concern. Any other questions? Are we ready to close the record on this one?
Yes.
Okay, then I move to close the record. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say the word by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So that brings us item number nine, eighteen thirty-seven, eighteen thirty-nine, South Road.
If you're going, if you'd like to take the microphone, you just have to turn it on. Yeah, and give it a second to, to warm up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Did you say your name?
Ed Lodi from Ed Lodi, Architect B C. And this is Beth Nash, project manager.
Okay. Mr. Lodi and Ms. Nash, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Pardon?
Why don't you tell us what you want to do?
Okay. The reason I brought this map along because this is an aerial photograph of the site. It's at eighteen thirty-nine Route Nine in Wapichus Falls. Does fall into the town of Poughkeepsie, that's the address. And what you can see back here is an area that's basically undeveloped. And we're here for a number of variances which we worked out together with your planning and zoning departments. And they're listed in the paperwork we submitted to you in February the eighteenth. And if you'd like either proceed, you might want to go through this or we'll do it or the chairman will want to go through. How would you like to do this? There are a number of variances here.
Why don't you go through each variance?
Okay. In order to follow me, you would need a map though. And we submitted, how many maps?
So I have a few items here. We wrote out each variance. I just did that separately aside from the application, so I can hand that out to you guys right now.
I think that's just to assist with this because there are a number of little areas that we're requesting variances for. The very first one, that's listed on the sheet you just received. Is that the one we're working off? Because this can be confusing if you're going to get.
The second sheet is the one that has all of the variants listed. The first sheet is the map, same as this image up here.
With six separate items on it. So the very first one. So the very first one is what we call an attached shed, which is on the drawing. It's right here in this corner. That was attached years ago. It's about eleven by twenty foot open shed that the owners store items under. I can't explain what happened over the last twenty years when he did these things, but apparently he didn't check, he didn't permit for them. So we're here hopefully trying to get this cured. As you can see from this, this whole area between the solid line and the dash line are woods. So you can't really see in there. There is a house approximately two hundred feet away over here. And, uh, if somebody's gone there possibly, you can determine that it's next impossible to see into this property. And we went to the planning board, they requested us to put some trees here, which we have proposed to do. So with those trees there, I don't think anybody can look into the property. This pe-, this little attached shed is on the other end of this area. And it has specific relief requests that we have that you can see. If you'd like, I'll go through it. The shed area is two hundred twenty-eight square feet and on, from the east.
Yeah.
We requested thirty-two foot, uh, relief and the other side, thirty-seven. This is, this little shed is, it just makes it impossible to see where it is, but it does, it was built inside the setback area. And that's what these other ones, you might want to help me because, uh, Beth prepared all this work, so she, I think, can help.
Do you guys have the plan in front of you? The large site plan?
Yes.
So if you refer to those areas, each shaded area is an outdoor storage. So each one has a square footage amount. And so on this list here, the six items just correlates to each of those areas.
I'm gonna ask you to do something for me.
Yep.
On this diagram.
Yeah.
Can you number and correspond each of the six items with the location on, on the drawing?
On the drawing, you can actually see each one? The, the large drawing, like Michael has it out?
Right. I just wonder how to. Locate each of these, one through six.
I can share a screen if the board would find it helpful, but I don't know, I don't have in front of me what you're looking at numbered, so I'm not sure it would be helpful.
Probably couldn't hurt though. That's Lisa Cobb. Lisa Cobb, the, uh, planning and zoning attorney. She's online, so she was, she was gonna put up the, uh.
Does that help?
Thanks. Thanks, Lisa. So the attached shed.
So I believe the attached shed is here.
Yeah. Uh, excuse me. Yeah. Yeah, that's the attached shed where you put, what? You moved your, uh, yeah, cursor. Lisa, you still?
I'm here. I, when I'm trying to see if I can help everybody.
Oh, you're trying to get fancy. All right.
I am.
Yeah.
That's the shed.
The attached shed, yep. All right. Outdoor storage, the first one is the thirteen oh five square feet. That's the one up, straight up top there. Yeah.
What number? This is one?
Yeah. That's number two.
Two. Sorry about that.
That's all right. This is good. Uh, the next one is three hundred and thirty-six square feet. Um, so that's the one to the left of there. Yeah, that's number three.
That's correct.
Uh, the next one is three hundred and eighty-four square feet. It's a block structure. Yeah. And that's the one that you're circling there. Great. Thank you. And then three hundred and sixty square feet is the open, the one to the left of that.
That's correct.
Yeah.
The last one is the large area, Jacob number six.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-seven hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Material, these are materials on the ground.
Right. Material, right. So all the ones that are not listed as being a structure are just materials on the, they're just areas where outdoor storage is.
Yes.
That's correct.
Correct.
The first one is the attached shed that is a structure.
Mm-hmm.
And also number, uh, five or number four.
Number four is a structure.
There are also photographs of these items in our.
Yep. I think we're just trying to identify all of the different.
Okay.
Um, the variances, cause that's, that's been hard to pin down.
I mean, you've worked with us, so I understand that's easier for you, but for the rest of the board.
Yeah.
You know, we tried the best we could to identify these. And if you've been there for the most part, these are materials that are on the ground. They're not structures that you really need to be concerned about, except like where one day this big building. And it's surrounded by all the woods that you see around it.
All right. Now where's the dumpster enclosure? That's.
At the top here.
Is it?
Yep. It's right there. I can maybe make that a different color.
There's two enclosures. So one of the enclosures is on a concrete pad and it's shaded. Um, and then the other one is next to the storage area, the thirteen oh five storage area. It's right in front of that.
Okay. All right. Those are the three small dumpsters and that's the new enclosure that you were proposing to build.
Yes. Both enclosures would be new.
Both are being.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Do you see that?
I guess. If I may, I just want to add that those three small dumpsters were in another area that the planning board suggested. We moved them out of that area because they're more visible and so we put them off to the side.
Okay. Christine, you have any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No. This has been here for how many years? I mean, no, I've got no questions at all.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Tony, yes.
No questions.
All right. Anyone from Zoom who was to comment on this application? And Lisa, if you would unshare your screen?
I can try. Um, and also before we get to, um, public comment, we should, the refuse enclosure variance was not noticed, so, um, the board can't grant that variance for tonight. And one of the attached structures, I think Chrissy can correct me, is, was zero feet made from the property line, um, a concrete pad instead of being where we had, um, variance number three is closest eleven feet to a side property line. I think there was something that was actually on the property line, so it was a zero foot variance.
Yes. Because the enclosure, I was told Beth had said that you were going to store, you, that was shaded because that was gonna be used as storage as well.
So currently it's used that way, but if it's going to be an enclosure just for refuse, he wouldn't have any materials stored inside of there.
Okay. So then, then at that point, then it's just a refuse enclosure.
Yes.
Um, that is, um, nine feet from the residential property line. So that would require the forty-one foot variance.
And the other refuse enclosure is sufficiently far away and doesn't require a variance?
Um, that, I don't know. Do you know the smaller dumpsters, how far they are from that residential property line?
I don't have the exact number with me, but I thought it was fifty and change.
Okay. Yeah. Usually how I do it is I, I'll, you know, mention the, the closer variance. So a variance as much as, in this case, it would be forty-one feet.
So do you want to re-advertise?
It has to be re-advertised. Yeah.
Yeah. The, the dumpster enclosure section of this sheet, I had them already written out before we spoke about it not being included. So I just included them just so we could make it known that we do have to return, cause that is part of.
Yeah.
The approvals we need.
All right. Is there anyone in Zoom who was to comment? Yes, sir.
I'm not sure. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, there's one variance here I didn't think was mentioned. Am I right or wrong about the?
Just the, the previous facade, um, like approval that was given.
Yes. The reapprovals, those were, um, noticed, so the, the board can, um, vote on that. Yes. Yep.
That would allow them to at least get started on that facade.
Yeah.
On the building that they came to us a long time ago and then they can clear up the, the notice for the next meeting.
Yep.
All right. So you just want to vote on, uh, a reapproval of the, of this and leave everything else?
To the next one.
Next one. That's all right with you?
So leaving storage until next time or?
Everything other than, we would vote on the, uh, reapproval of, of the prior variance.
Mm-hmm.
And then we would do everything else next month.
Okay. So we're waiting on storage as well?
Yes. As we re-advertise the ad to store.
Well, it was included in that. It was just the dumpsters that were not included.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. So yes, that's correct.
Okay.
All right. Anyone from Zoom who was to comment on this application? All right. I don't see anyone. So I'll move to adjourn. This application with the exception of, um, the reapproval of a variance granted in October twen-, two thousand twenty-three. So, uh, April fourteenth, twenty-fourth. Two thousand twenty-five. All right. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say goodbye by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And then I think I'm, uh, gonna ask that we have a ten-minute break and come back on at eight-thirty. Is there a second?
Do you want to close the hearing on the, on the, uh, one that is?
I'll move to close, uh, that.
Hold on, guys.
Sit down, please. Hold on. Sit down, please.
I'll move to close the public hearing on the reapproval of the variance granted in October twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three on item number nine. Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Then I move to, uh, adjourn until eight-thirty. Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, we're back in session? And so in terms of our... Let's do number eight first. There are a number of variances here, there is a staff report. I think the applicant described the need for a number of apartments and the density, I think she also described that is not particularly significant change in the nature of the neighborhood, sort of existed as a multifamily, notwithstanding the fact it's been listed as a single-family home, it's been utilized as a multiple-family residence for a number of years. The parking issue, that will require a condition that they grant, that they get granted town approval.
The highway superintendent took a look at it, was fine with the width of the road for piling purposes, and the parking, even though it's in the right-of-way, is on outside of the roadway. You understand what I'm saying, right? Because the property line actually is further in, so, you know, he was fine with that, from his perspective.
Okay. Is this an unlisted action?
This is an unlisted action.
Then... Well, first of all, does anybody have a problem with these variances?
With what?
You have a problem?
Yeah.
I do.
With what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You have a problem with number eight, the variance is at number eight.
Yes.
Tony?
I don't know, I mean, I'm kind of hung up on the parking, to be honest with you.
It's not the question.
What's that?
It's not the question, it's if they have a problem with the variance, that's right.
Right, yeah. So before I do the EAF, I want to see whether people are going to grant the variance.
You kept asking her, how many dwellings did she need to have this make it? Did she ever give a final answer?
No, but the architect or the...
Architect kind of did.
Described that this was the best use for the building, I think. But yes, you did not answer that question about economic needs for the number of apartments.
Don't we also have to look at the impact to the neighborhood?
So how do you think it will change the... I mean, there'll be an impact, there'll be an increased impact, I don't think it changes the nature of the neighborhood?
Sure does. They're going to have garbage right outside the front door, they have an open stairwell at the edge of their driveway. Right, and they're going to have cars, even though the town says they're going to be off... Those cars, the rear ends are going to be on the road.
Well...
Or close to it.
So I think what's going to happen is the tenants are not going to use the parking designated, they're going to overflow into the road, which is going to create more congestion.
They're not going to get out of bed and move the car, if I want to move my car.
Two cars back to back, why would I do that, and I can park in the road?
Well, until they start getting ticketed.
Sounds like they're not getting ticketed now, which is a side issue, but I just...
They did say that they were going to increase the size of the water main and the size of the sewer main when they connected with the city, I mean, you know, that's vis-a-vis the density issue, right? So I mean, as far as that goes, I don't, it looks like it... For the utilities, it looks like that's covered, I guess is what I'm saying.
And I drove down Van de Water today, and it was the way she pictured it.
Yeah, it's a mess.
I completely sympathize with what she's doing and applaud it, but I just think it's too much for what's...
Do you think one less apartment would make a difference?
No.
Well, unless they, if you had angled, angled parking spaces maybe, instead of square in, I don't know.
But there's not enough room.
She doesn't have the property for that.
Well, that's, but then you'd have to go down, like reduce by one unit, maybe if you did that, I don't know. I'm just saying, it's really packed the way it's proposed.
And it is such a tiny...
More viable option would be to shorten the garage and put less apartments on the top.
In order to manage the garbage.
Manage it all.
So if the variance is defeated, what could they, what can she come back with?
So it's a three-car garage, right?
Two.
Two?
Two, well, it's three right now, isn't it? I think it's three right now.
I believe so.
Yeah. But they were talking about one of them being like for an eighth part of ADA parking or something.
Yes, handicap parking.
The office is going to take part in the third garage, isn't it? Is that what she said?
Not the garage, the third space, the handicap space.
Oh, the other, the other third one was going to be an office, that's what it was? Oh, okay, all right, oh no, I forgot about that.
Two parking spaces inside the garage and then the commercial space.
Oh, man. Maybe, maybe instead of a commercial space, they're going to be talking about trash, trash storage, I don't know, I'm just saying, right? I don't know, it seems to me that even if, even if we're sympathetic to this, maybe three units is too many in addition, I don't know. Is there, is there any, any support for a fewer number of units? I don't know.
So if this is defeated, what could, if she comes back with a new proposal?
Yeah. He said, how does that work again, if she comes back with a new proposal, then it can be heard, right?
Yeah, if the board were to deny it, you just can't come back with the same proposal. So if you change it...
You could change it, right?
Right.
So the point was, is if it's two garages, if it's two cars with a building above it, if it wasn't two, whatever that would equate to, that would give them room for the stairs, more room for refuge, less parking.
Well, the building, the building, the end of the building is where the end of the building is.
Correct, but extending beyond that with the stairs and the refuge or the neighbor's property, if it was less...
But I think they need the stairs as a fire escape, right?
Right, but if it didn't go that far, and the garage was shorter, or something that was shorter with the building, it would be more into the property.
But the...
Do the stairs have to be on the end of the building, could they be on the other side?
The cost was for 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit.
So if it was less than three units?
They meet the parking requirement with the parking...
The way they have it packed.
The way they're showing it, yes.
Right.
And I mean, what they talked about with the stacked parking, I lived in a house with a single, a narrow, single driveway where we had to, you know, plan who was leaving first in the morning, I mean, that, that works, it's not, admittedly not the most convenient thing, but if you're moving into a place, that's what you would...
That's the conditions.
That's what you would move into it knowing, right? So, so I think that can work, yeah.
Are the stairs on the side of the building where the refuse enclosure is going, are they existing or proposed?
Proposed, yeah.
And Chrissy, they don't need a variance because they're open, because they're not enclosed, is that...
Stairs are allowed to encroach.
What about garbage?
Do they have to be on the end?
They're seeking variance from that.
Could there be any other side of the building, instead of on the end of the building? I don't know, I'm just trying to think of what might be, somebody might do.
What are your suggestions?
I think that this is a way to clean up a mess.
Yeah.
I think that the building is, has been illegal for a number of years, and it's a way to operate illegally. Whether her proposal makes economic sense is a different matter, but it would still be a multifamily building. I think there's an effort to find, this would certainly be low-income.
Well, she didn't say that.
Not necessarily.
What's that?
She didn't say that.
No, she didn't say it, but it's, are you going to pay $3,000 a month to live there?
No, I don't think I should go there.
She did kind of say that it was, she mentioned subsidized.
Yeah.
Yeah, she strongly implied it would be...
Yes.
Right, but I, in terms, I mean, she may not, I mean, certainly she can, you know, people, sex and age, she can, you know, sex and age, I don't know that she can necessarily qualify for subsidized housing.
Because they're living in a walking community.
Yeah, they may have less than two cars per unit, certainly, because it's a walking community.
But you can't guarantee that.
You can't guarantee anything. You can't guarantee...
Why don't we just vote on it?
The other thing is, a lot of the cars that are parked on Van de Water are actually related to the business across the street, they're not related to residences, right?
So what do you do about that?
Well, if they're there in the winter time overnight, they can be towed.
They could be towed in the winter, yeah.
They don't do that, they don't do that in the fairview, they park on the street all night, every night.
Yeah, theoretically they could be towed, but whether they would be is another question. Right?
I just think they're packing too much into small...
I'm not sympathetic to the idea of what she's trying to do.
Me neither.
What would essentially be fewer apartments, does that change anything?
Well, here's a thought.
Oh, we don't have...
The building is the building, right, in terms of the layout of the garages, but what if you, what if you didn't have a third apartment over that last garage, and part of that was a route to your egress, you know, a walkway, going to a stairway or something like that? In other words, you're not going to change the building, the building is, the building is, right?
You're still going to have the garbage at their front door.
Yeah, well, that's the other issue.
You want that?
No, I'm just saying, but that's, that's the other issue, is the refuse.
Like Tony says, knock that third garage down.
Well, you mean just physically?
Take it down.
Physically take it down?
Maybe.
Okay, I didn't think of that. If you physically took it down and then put the, what do you call it, the stairway on the side of the, what would now be the two garages, instead of the three garages? No, I'm just trying to visualize it.
Has planning been involved?
Planning has been involved, yeah, I mean, the layout that you see now is the result of some back and forth, I mean, it was, I think the planning board felt like it was fairly well thought out, like the parking. They, you know, again, confirmed that the license for the right-of-way, which we've done elsewhere, that that would be, you know, an appropriate use of that space. So...
You made a good point, Paul, I think that something I hadn't really thought of was that it's an improvement, if it was already being used illegally...
It seemed, I feel like that was the testimony that it had been utilized as a multifamily home illegally for a number of years.
Prior to her buying it, apparently, right? What we're left to believe, I don't know, right?
So if they lost the garage, how would that change things? How many apartments would they...
Wouldn't it, Mr. Chairman? Wouldn't we just easily make that suggestion to them, have them come back and do this for us? Instead of us trying to plan their...
Well...
Because we could sit here all night trying to do the what-ifs and make the plans, but if she's not agreeable, right?
Okay, so how many people would vote for the variance?
Vote for the variant, but for the whole thing?
Yeah.
No, they couldn't vote for the whole thing.
Okay. Well, then...
Could we approve a smaller?
No.
I asked the same question, why are we designing this facility?
Yeah, they should come back with, if it's going to be, if that's ultimately, they should come back with a plan that shows that and show that, how it works.
And if she were to go back to Chrissy, Chrissy could walk her through some of the concerns.
I think it would be planning, but...
Yeah, she'd have to go back with her architect and design something different.
I mean, I, you know, listen, to start off with, I guess, I think it's fair to say that we object to the density, right? I mean, I think that's where we're all coming from, on density, right? For myself, I think, I think the parking, while it might be legal, is kind of not adequate. And then the third thing, of course, is the location, the refuse containers, but I mean, however you want to, you want to phrase it, but I mean, I, personally, I would kind of like, maybe be inclined to let them do two units, if they came back and said, we want to do two, instead of three. You know, I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
I heard over there, too.
Yeah.
Those single families could be legalized to apartment with another apartment, there's already a kitchen there, too.
Right, yeah.
So there's other options.
There's other, yeah.
All right, then let me make these findings. Whether an undesirable change will reduce the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by... or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance.
Is the board inclined to deny the variance? Is that what I'm hearing?
For this evening? Yes.
You, and it's Paul, it sounds like you're struggling with potential findings?
Yes.
Do you want me to do it, or would you like someone who is in support of the denial of the variance to make the findings?
Yeah, why don't you do it?
So, if they're saying, an undesirable change or detriment to nearby properties, we heard testimony that the stairs, the location of the proposed exit stairs and the refuse enclosure are with less than five feet from the neighboring property, and that the density is, the proposed density is four times what's allowed on the site. And the board finds that that would constitute an undesirable change in the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. Whether there are alternatives that are feasible for the applicant to pursue, if the applicant were to come back with fewer residential units, and perhaps a building that's located slightly farther from the neighboring property line, that would alleviate the concerns of the density and the proximity to the neighbor, the potential negative impacts. Whether the variances are substantial, particularly the density and the refuse area, they are mathematically substantial, and the board finds that they are also substantial in effect. Technically, there is no variance required for the parking, but if the board were going to grant the other variances, they would just need to condition the parking on the, on the license agreement being approved. Whether there's an adverse environmental effect, there isn't any testimony in the record at this point that there was an adverse, and that there would be any adverse environmental effects. And whether the difficulty is self-created, it is, but that's, you know, and the board credits that information in this, it's self-created by the choice of the number of units being proposed for the parcel. Anyone have any additions or comments or subtractions from those?
No, I think that covers it, I think, very much. Yeah.
Now, you need someone to move and make a-
Are you going to make a motion to that? Sure.
I moved that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item, I don't know what it was.
It's eight.
Eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In denying this variance, the board adopts the findings that set forth by the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of denying the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The motion to deny the variances carries. Okay. That brings us to... Let's see, who's still here? All right. Why don't we do forty-five Brackler? That's item number five. This to legalize a hot tub and a shed over top of a hot tub. I don't have any problem with the hot tub, it's been there a couple of years, it seems to be somewhat secluded by the vegetation that's there. I, I do have a problem with building a structure in the front yard of, to enclose the hot tub in the front yard. I, I think that, particularly in light of everything else that's in the front yard, and its proximity to the neighbor, I, I, I think that's a detriment. And I would, I would vote against it. Anybody have any real disagreement with that?
I don't have a disagreement, I guess the other thing is screening, right? If you want to, if you want to do whatever we're going to do, can, could, I mean, you want to deny, deny the, the structure, right, is what you're saying? Yeah. I, I guess-
He can do whatever he wants for screening. He can, he can, if he wants screening-
Right.
Vegetation, he can do all those things.
Right, he could do all of that stuff anyway.
Or he could have put it in the backyard.
Right, okay, so, what we're talking about is just denying the building of a structure around it.
Right, so we're going to legalize the hot tub, there's a, there's a pool in the front yard.
Yep.
But my position would be to deny the structure.
Deny the structure, yeah, okay.
Anybody have any concerns about that?
But a pool shouldn't be in the front yard either.
It should not be, but it's been there for a number of years.
The permit was, it was in a different location.
Really?
When they filed their permit, yeah.
Oh, was it? Where was it?
Yeah, it was in the backyard.
Oh, they didn't comply with the permit?
It was there at one point, and then they moved it.
It was where, in the backyard?
Backyard.
So, they moved it to the front yard?
Correct.
Without permission?
Correct.
But the permit was the backyard?
That's what he just said.
Okay, I don't know, I just want to make sure.
So that he's in violation.
Okay, so if that's the case, then, yeah.
Yeah, so why weren't they cited for having a pool in the front yard without a permit?
Uh, it wasn't found until they applied for the shed.
Okay.
So, I looked back-
Because we could salt it all into one zoning application.
Yeah, so that's what I did, that, you know, I put the, the hot tub on here, too, because it was, you know, in the front yard when it was permitted for the backyard.
When you say pool, you're talking hot tub?
Yeah.
Correct.
It's a hot tub, yeah.
Okay, okay, I thought there was this separate pool that was down in the front, sorry. Okay.
All right, well, does that change anything?
They moved the hot tub.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then, let me make these-
He doesn't need it in closure, too. He can still put it in if he wants, it's his backyard.
Yeah.
What's that?
Paul, if he were, if he were to move the hot tub to the backyard, then would we have a problem of him building?
A shed, so long as it bet all the side yard and rear lap sideline.
Yeah, if it's beyond the front line of the house, it wouldn't matter.
Right.
Okay.
He can do what he wants, yeah.
So, deny on the basis that he didn't comply with the permit, basically?
Well-
I mean, essentially.
Let me, whether an undesirable change will reduce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance. Our, our town code prohibits pools or hot tubs in the front yards. And this would be a change, an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Throughout the neighborhood, I didn't see any other hot tubs or pools in the front yard or in the neighborhood, so... Whether the benefits sought by the applicant, achieved by some method, feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than area variance, to put it back where it was permitted in the first place. And whether it's substantial, the, the hot tub is not allowed in the front yard, and so that's a 100% variance. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence it will have any physical or environmental impact. And notwithstanding the fact that the applicant says that the hot tub can't be moved, apparently it was. And so, this is, although this is, this is self-created, and although not normally a reason to deny, I would add that. Regarding the shed, likewise, a shed, sheds are not allowed in the front yard. This is particularly a large shed. And so, I would find that that would be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. As, except for the carport already in the front yard of his property, I didn't notice any other sheds or structures in the front yard. Whether the applicant, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, if the applicant moves the hot tub back where it's permitted, then that would be, that would resolve that issue. And whether area variance is substantial, it's, it's not permitted in the front yard, therefore it is substantial. We'll have no, there's no evidence that it would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, and this is self-created, although that's not a reason in itself to deny the application, and so I would offer those by case. Christine?
So, can I ask you-
Yes.
So, based on this, Chrissy, does he have to move the hot tub?
Yes.
Yeah.
And this was? Item number five.
So, we're voting to deny? I moved that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In denying this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say the word by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion carries?
And one, one recusal.
What's that?
One recusal.
And one, oh, I'm sorry, one recusal. All right, that brings us to item number nine. Is the, the reapproval, was that an unlisted action?
That is an unlisted action, yeah? No.
It is an unlisted action, but the planning board already did a lead agency on it in 2024.
Okay.
So, this board doesn't need to redo the, the planning board data.
Gotcha, okay. And... So, Phyllis, if you want to make a motion to approve, to to a reapproval of a side yard setback about less than forty feet, the building is for, for a variance of thirty-five feet, seven inches, and this is just a reapproval of a prior approval, and I think you can rely on the prior findings.
Do you need me to read the feet and all of that in as well? Or just reference the original findings?
Yeah, just, just reference, you can just refer to the reapproval.
Okay.
So, just clarification, was, it was setbacks and also that roof, right? That skillean roof, or whatever that is, was approved?
Yeah.
That was the setback?
It's the modifications to the roof that are causing the setback variance.
Okay.
So, there is no approval required from this board or the roof itself, but the fact that the building is being changed is what required the, the variance.
Okay. I moved that the board approve the request for the reapproval of an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings, the results of site visits by the board members, and prior information in making this decision. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings, again, as set forth in, in the original approval of the variance.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say the word by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and I move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say the word by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Before you go, hold on one sec, just, Sonya sent around an email today about some Duchess County Planning Federation training that's being given on Tuesday, April 29th. And one of them is particularly about CBA, so just take a look at your email and sign up at the end. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.